For the meeting to order, please stand up for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act has been given in the following manner: by emailing written notice to the Borough Post in the retrospect on January 10, 2019; by posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the municipal building on January 10, 2019; by filing written notice with the clerk of Borough Woodland on January 10, 2019.
Rockoff?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
He called out city.
Ms. Torres?
Present.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Feliciano?
She called her puppies, or her dogs are having puppies, so she is attempting to herd to be born puppies.
President Early?
Here.
Mayor Fuentes?
Here.
Okay, at this point, we now start with committee report. Start with public buildings and property, Councilman Cook.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Solicitor, members of council, and to our residents, our report for the month of September, we have a total of two hall rentals. Rentals was for $4.50, $100, total for about $150 for the month, giving us a grand total of $4,810, and that's my report for the month of September.
Are you no longer reading the names?
Oh, excuse me, no, I don't have the names at this time. There will be, yes, I do. Uh, things is, uh... Mayor Fuentes?
That was last month, if you read that one last month.
I have here September... Marisol Wolfes? Yeah. This, according to the report that was submitted to me by Elaine Harper, it says Jerry Fuentes, non-hortum, 2019, $60.
You read that one last month.
I'm reading what, based on the report that's here that was submitted to me.
And that's all you had to?
Yes, sir.
You have Cook also writing the whole, right?
We're talking about the month of...
When you were reading, that's why when I explained to you when you were doing reports, Councilman, when I say, when I was doing the reports, I was giving you month to month, you say, "I would like to do the full report," and I say, "Well, when you start to read the full report, what happens is it does those off the month-to-month rental." So you started reading off month at hall rental for the event that was taking place. So at the last month, you've read my report, my name for the hall rental, which was fine, but then again, this month you want to read it again, but you're failing to report your hall rental.
When I spoke with Muggsy, Mayor, at Muggsy, Elaine Harper submitted a report to me and told me that the two rentals for the month, what was you, and then she mentioned the other rental.
But you used to read, what I'm saying, you used to read all the, what was collected for that month, for the month. That's okay, I just wanted to just point it out, you're not, you know, on the reading, no problem.
I'll get back to it, Mayor, thank you. That's my report.
You have a report of buildings, properties, can I get a motion second to receive file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouwaki?
Second.
Second by Council President Early, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point, we go with public safety, Councilwoman Torres. Councilwoman Torres.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Clark, Solicitor, Council President, members of council, and the public. My report is for the month of September. Below are the monthly totals for the police department for the month of September 2019. Cost for services was 397, parking summons eight, moving violations 115, adult arrests nine, juvenile arrests zero, driving under the influence, zero, borough ordinance six. The department towed three vehicles during this month. Uniform crime report is as follows: robbery one, aggravated assault zero, simple assault zero, theft six, burglary two, disorderly conduct two, drug offenses one, motor vehicle theft one. This is my report for the month of September, respectfully submitted by Evelyn Figueroa, Director of Public Safety.
You heard the report of public safety, can I get a motion second to receive file? Motion by Councilman Chouwaki?
Second.
Second by Council President Early, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point, we go emergency management, Councilman Chouwaki?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Clark, Solicitor, members of the council, and Council President, and good evening, every resident. Mayor, I did not receive the county greenout. I made a request to the chief, and he wasn't giving to me, and I spoke to him today, the fire chief, and he said he did not receive that.
Yeah, sometimes the county does not get it on time, so get it next month, maybe.
So next month, I'll be able to report this September as well as the October month together. However, we participated in the convention, the Fire Fire Convention at Wildwood, and we have three life members and four delegates, and all of them showed up, which is good. Also, as you all know, this month is the fire prevention week, and the borough is planning to have fire prevention activity, just like we did last year, the fire hall, this coming Monday by 7:00 P.M., so everybody is invited to come. Thank you.
Yeah, you heard the report of emergency management, can I make a motion second to receive file?
Motion.
Motion by Council President Early? For a second?
Vote.
Vote second? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point, here we go with public work, Council President Early?
Good evening, Mr. Solicitor, Mayor, Mayor Clark.
Evening.
Members of council, members of the public. This is the public works report for the month of September 2019, week number one for recycling. We had 7,600 pounds or 3.80 tons. Week number two, 5,880 pounds or 2.94 tons. Week number three, 6,480 pounds or 3.24 tons. Week number four, 6,400 pounds or 3.20 tons. Week number five, 6,440 pounds or 3.22 tons. Total recycling was 32,800 pounds or 16.40 tons. Trash, week number one, we had 58,240 pounds or 29.2 tons. Week number two, 40,320 pounds or 20.16 tons. Week number three, 40,040 pounds or 23.52 tons. God bless the money. Week number four, 46,660 pounds or 23.33 tons. Total trash was 192,260 pounds or 96.13 tons. For yard waste, number one, there were five yards. Week number two, 15. Week number three, 11. Week number four, 6, for a total of 37 yards. That concludes the monthly report. This was respectfully submitted by Robert Kenny. This is the report for September of 2019.
You heard the report of public work, can you hear the motion second to receive a file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Torres, second by Councilman Chouwaki, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki? Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Just real quick to let everybody know that October 26, we're having our trunk and tree, and that'll be at the baseball field. We're doing the hayride, weather pendant. We're also going to be doing some music activity going on, so we welcome anyone who wants to come out, be part of it. We encourage the children to dress up, they'll be giving away some candies, and music will be going on, activity will be going on, so that'll be on October 26 from 1 to 3 at the baseball field.
Do you have to head if it goes right and we aren't planning on going and using the moving event inside the cabin, because it goes right?
I have to, there, and then, just to go from the location that people know, go to the cabin. Check. At this point, if you look at your agenda, it says ordered in 2019-13, that is actually, should be 2019-12. It is the public hearing and adoption. This was introduced last month meeting. This is for public hearing and adoption only on orders of 2019-12. An order is on the Borough Woodland County Cam, State of New Jersey, authorizing the public sale of block 502 lot 4, block 502 lot 5, block 503 lot 38 and 1, and block 302 lot 10, Borough Woodland County Cam, State of New Jersey, at the open public sale pursuit to the NJSA 40A colon 12, 1. Can I get a motion second? Motion by Cook?
Second.
Second by Council President. At this point, I open it up to the public on 2019-12. Now here it is, and I close it. Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. And orders, which everybody should have a copy of, it's down on the agenda, an order is 2019-13, it's for handicap, and orders amended in chapter 87 of Borough Woodland County Cam, State of New Jersey, entire parking handicap. Motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouwaki?
Second.
Second by Council President Early? Any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution 2019-68, resolution appointing an acting clerk for the Borough Woodland Cam and Cam, State of New Jersey, can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouwaki?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Torres, any question?
Yes. Now, with this position, this is a temporary position until we build, and we make it up to the people.
That's what's enacted.
And did we put, did we put out any information for the regular?
We'll sit down, we'll discuss it, and she is active.
Now, is there a change in salary, is it kind of different?
She'll get a stipend to the difference of what the Borough Clerk would get.
Or potentially as far as the amount?
It was $4,000, so we divide that calculation for the three months she'll be doing. Any other question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
I abstain.
President Early?
Yes.
Three yes, one abstain, motion. Resolution 2019-69, resolution for the tax collector to turn over fund from the premium account to the general fund, can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouwaki?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Council President Early, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
I abstain.
Three yes, one abstain.
President Early? Yes.
Just to let everybody know what this is, this is for money that was put there in the premium that hasn't been applied before, that nobody has claimed, so the borough, after a certain period of time, the borough is required to keep that money, so this is money that, sort of, I call the found in money, because this is for premium money that goes for the tax sale, and when somebody does not get the premium and they don't turn it over, the borough keeps it after a certain period. Resolution 2019-70, resolution authorizing to sign the municipal lines grant agreement, government, council, alcohol and drugs abuse fiscal grant cycle year 2020 to June 2025. Can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouwaki, second by Council President Early, any questions? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution 2019-71, a resolution of the Borough Woodland County Cam, State of New Jersey, authorizing payment to Gumbally Concrete, can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Chouwaki?
Second.
Second by Council President Early, question?
I have a question.
Yep. Any other question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution 2019-72, a resolution of the Borough Woodland approving the August, July, August, September 2019 national school meetings, can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Chouwaki?
Second.
Second by President Early, question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point, approval of the bills, can I get a motion second?
Cook.
Motion by Cook?
Second.
Second by Councilman Chouwaki, any question? Full vote?
Mr. Chouwaki?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Any other business?
I do, before we begin the public portion of this evening's meeting, I'm going to ask for everyone's, and that we start to be a little bit more respectful with one another. This is on both ends, this is on mayor and council's end, as well as the audience's end. Been a lot said and stated, a lot of these meetings have become more of like a circus atmosphere rather than a public meeting. Secondly, you know, I see a lot being said and not a lot being done, and a lot of people complaining on Facebook. To me, what it really, I've been in this town for 30 years. The biggest thing that I see going on and what's been going wrong with things in this town and within the neighborhoods, to me, is a lot of apathy. When I first moved here, I knew who my neighbors were. When I moved here, my neighbor greeted me as we were moving furniture in the home. I knew who she was, she became a very good friend of mine, an instant babysitter, and we all knew each other's business, we all knew what was going on. That's no longer the case a lot of times. I still know my neighbors very well, but not in that respect anymore. When my children were in school, I volunteered a lot despite the fact that I did work 40 hours. When they wanted to do things, and they were told they couldn't do it because there wasn't an adult to run a program, I silly may raised my hand and I allowed myself to get involved in Girl Scouts brownies and all sorts of activities so that they would have it. It wasn't just for her, it was for that group of girls when they were told, when they went to college, that there is no true, you can't be a brownie. I became a brownie leader. So for three years, I ran brownies and sold cookies out of my home. Not that I had a whole heck of a lot of time, but what little time I did, I invested in that. When my child was in school and things started changing within the neighborhood, I came up with an idea, let's have a potluck dinner and get everybody together at the hall. Admission was simply bring a covered dish. No Facebook blast, no dissing my neighbors, no dissing politicians. We got it together, and it came out as a well-turned-out event. So well-turned-out that the freeholders showed up to it, and we were granted a proclamation for stepping up and doing things like that. These are the things that I feel are sincerely lacking again. We have the cabin available to us, I have not seen anyone raise their hand and volunteer to go in there and do something with the kids. Everybody has the opportunity to do so. You can do arts and crafts with the kids, you can do storytime with the kids. All we simply ask is that you fill out and get a police background check. No one has done that, but a lot of people keep complaining that there's nothing for the kids to do. Well, before you start to complain, step back, step up to the plate, and start getting involved in things on a more simpler basis. That's what is sincerely lacking around here nowadays. Everybody that has children would love to see them have something to do, so let's make them something to do, let's all step up as adults and parents and be that person for them. And that is all I do have to say for this evening, and I apologize for rambling, but I just don't like the way the last few meetings have been running, so I would just like a little respect on everybody's end, here and there. If it does get out of hand, I will exercise my right as council president to simply just close the meeting down and call it a night. Thank you.
I would like to go on a little bit, I'll touch it back. You know, for many months, I have allowed for the public to speak. There's nothing to say that we have to give the answer. Give the public the right to speak, but there's nothing to say we have to give them the answer. Because the fact is that, for whatever the nature that would be, also understanding, so everybody, there is a by the government bylaw, okay? It is, when, while presiding over the meeting of the council, the mayor should perceive the strictest order and decorum. The mayor shall cause the removal of all person who interrupts orderly presiding of the council meeting. So, last thing I wanted to, we want to give everybody the opportunity to speak their mind, speak and say what they have to say. This is not where we have to address the audience, it is here to address the mayor and council, so we have the mic there, it would be addressed to mayor and council. At this point, I would now like to open up the public portion, please stand. Before you open the public portion, I'd just like to get back on what the mayor's saying. So essentially, the public portion is the public comments. It's a fantastic platform that allows the public to talk about their feelings, their opinions, their comments on borough matters. What it is not is a question and answering session. So you may ask mayor and council questions, but I'm reminding them as much as I'm reminding you guys, is that they have no duty or obligation to just field 15 or 20 different questions. But I do want to acknowledge that the public portion is a fantastic venue and platform to speak your opinion, and I just want to confirm with the mayor's. At this point, I'd like to now open up to the public portion, please state your name.
Hi, Kelly Jankowski.
On to the mic, please.
Fancy, I have a camera. Kelly Jankowski on 22nd Avenue, I was just wondering, on these senior luncheons, how come we only have two, and they're always right before the election?
It's always been around this time, always, always, because we tied it with the Halloween party, that's why.
And the May one was just, was it since election too?
No.
Okay.
It's good, if you look at the last year event and the previous year event...
Oh, I thought you used to have every month.
That they do them accordingly to the timing, that's done, so that's where they're done.
And the second thing, on ignorance, I just wanted to say that I've never disrespected you as mayor when I come to the meeting. However, I'm disrespected all the time by you, not only am I disrespected by you, but my daughter's boyfriend was disrespected by you. I was at the laundromat when you were out campaigning, and you disrespected me there. Mr. Chouwaki can vouch for that.
I, I see.
And, I mean, and you've came to my house and harassed me at my house.
Never, no.
Yes, you did. When I hung the cook sign up, you came to my house and told me not to vote for Hannah. You came to my house and told me Karen Miller doesn't pay her taxes, and she's no good. And I told you it wasn't right for you to go around.
You were...
You came to my house and told me how to park my car.
Those are your words, not my words, no, I didn't.
You didn't come and tell me how to park my car?
No.
Please, you told me my front end was sticking out, but I parked my car.
Oh, that, your front end was sticking out, I didn't tell you how to park your car, I was curious.
Well, I'm saying, all you do is harass me.
I just know, you said your car doesn't get hit.
I'm just saying, it's not right.
So your car didn't get hit, I said your front end is sticking out.
Right, well, I'm just saying it's not right, and I don't think it's right. And when are they going to use some municipal lines for the kids?
We do use it for the kids.
When?
We use it all the time, we use it with the church, we use it with the school, we use it with activity we have, so yes. Okay, and I want to, I'm going to go back a little.
Can we put like pictures on the flyers that you send out to people, residents of the town, like the veteran? We don't have a veteran in town that you couldn't put on the flyer?
We're not going to, it's campaigning material, so this is not...
It's not campaigning.
It is campaigning material.
It was a newsletter.
No, it wasn't nothing from the town.
Well, the news, the campaign letter had the veteran, but the newsletter has a bunch of farming, that ain't even farming.
So I'm going to answer your question, a few things that you said, first of all, you know, because you like to say that I'm harassed, nobody's harassing, and if you're talking about your son-in-law being harassed, you were not here, I was here downstairs with Muggsy, so your son-in-law was not harassed. And at every meeting, you can say, you say, "You don't disrespect me?" Kelly, you've done it since day one, since you started.
I never disrespected you.
Yes, you have, Kelly. Now, the other thing, in the, in the laundromat, all I said, Councilman Chouwaki was there, and your friend Al Thomas was there, all I say is, "I'm not giving you a literature because you will throw it away." What you say, "Yes, I will throw it away," so that's all that was said.
I said I already had one.
No, 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 you said...
And I showed Chouwaki, I was trying to show him my fancy one, he said, "No, I had fancy one."
Thank you. So when you're called out on it, you don't want to hear it.
Hi, how you doing? Jeff Goodman, 315 Cypress. First, I was just curious to know, what's the, the status of the 2018 municipal audit?
2018 municipal audit?
Yes.
You should have gotten that, you're talking about the 2019.
The one for this fiscal year, one, yeah.
Okay, 2019, what's the status? They just wrapped it up, so like you were given a notice, once we get it, everything like that, council's going to get their package, everything, so once council reviews it, you'll get your copy, as it was stated in your Oprah request, that once we have it, it's available, you will get the copy.
How come DCA's had it for over a month?
I don't know why, because what I'm saying to you, listen...
Well, you said, you said it, you said it wasn't done, so the council couldn't do it.
I didn't say it wasn't, I said, we, they just wrapped it up, and once we get the package, council reviews it, then you, it will be out to the public.
Okay, I'm just really curious to know what the council thinks.
I answered your question.
I'm not, I'm, I'm attracted to the council. The, the DCA has had the audit, that's dated September 11th.
Well, the order is set about the state.
Since September 19th.
The state...
So why is the council not accorded this same?
So it hasn't been a month, so the state gets it, it gets turned into the state, the auditor will turn it over to us, because the state gets it first, okay? The order will send the package to us, and once we get it, the council will get it.
I'm not sure that's the exact process, but I am, and I think the council should be a little concerned, that documents that the public should have had, the, and again, just to reference the right code, NJSA 40A colon 5 dash 4 requires the annual audit to be completed within six months after the close of the fiscal year, which should have been June. So the audit should have been done and presented months ago.
The order was done, and the preparation to set everything up, just finished by the auditor, okay?
Okay, so, so I can come and get a, a copy of the audit now, or next week, put in the Oprah request for that?
Go ahead, Jackson, or you can just get it, I don't think you need, you can do it, Oprah would, if you like, so you don't just...
I think I probably should.
Okay.
The next thing I want to, to touch base about, and council president early mentioned about a lot being said and not a lot being done. For, for many months, I've been bringing up the concept and the idea of approaching the county to adjust the tax equalization rate. I actually, because I have seen no movement, I reached out to the county and they got back to me and said that they are considering that request. I actually emailed that to the mayor and council after I got that. So, so I do think it's important to know, although I'm not addressing the community behind me, that they hear that with a little bit of effort, an email, maybe a phone call, that some positive movement can be taken place instead of the issue being ignored for many months. Every time I came up here. Every time I came up here, I was given a runaround. Council doesn't, did not seem to react in a positive light when I brought up that concept. And I'm just glad that at this point, it looks like there's some positive movement on that. And the one question I did have, it was in the email, is the county said they would reach out to the tax assessor. Has anybody talked to the tax assessor, see if that has, anything has progressed from there?
I've had the chance to talk to the tax assessor.
I'm sorry?
I've had the chance to talk to Dan Gaddy, the tax assessor, yes.
Okay. Has he heard? I mean, has there been any further conversation?
It's just what you're going to get also. They want to respond back to you. I've also spoke to the county also on that matter. You know, you know, we appreciate you going out there, talking, but like I said to you, and obviously understanding, Jeff, when you brought it up, really understanding that this is something that for the 2019 can't be done, anything, we have to look forward for the next year to look, to look at those ratio and look at the numbers. So as I spoke to the county, the same person you spoke to, obviously said, said it to you. There's nothing you do because the board doesn't meet until sometime in Jan- January or February before they can put something together.
But at the last meeting, you had indicated that you had talked to the freeholders.
Spoke to one freeholder.
Well, you said freeholders, but I actually went to the last freeholder meeting.
I know you did.
And asked the question, and not one freeholder said that they, actually, they said they had not spoken to you.
I don't know what you're talking about, Jeff. I'm not going to debate you on this. Just I don't know what you're.
Well, that's probably wise.
I know.
But, but, but there's another freeholder meeting coming up at the boathouse. I think it's on the nineteenth, but check the website. I really invite the rest of the council and the mayor to go and, and listen to the freeholders. I think that the county can help us out in a lot of ways.
They do. They do help us in a lot of ways.
I think the county helps out in a lot of ways and we need to communicate better and when somebody says.
You can't say, I hope we can communicate because we have an open, good relationship with the county. So, you know, those words that you're saying, I hope that we can communicate better. Just to let you know, we do communicate closely and that's why we've been successful with many grants for the town.
Apparently, at the last meeting, when you said you spoke to the freeholders, that communication didn't make its way to them because they said they hadn't spoken to you.
This is your words.
Well, there'll be minutes of the meeting, which I would be happy to present next time.
Jeff, I'm not debating you on this here. Continue.
Okay, good. Okay. But again, in a positive light, hopefully that's something, the tax equalization ratio can get revised, which would lower the tax burden that we have to pay to the county every year. So, so again, there can be some positive movement, but it takes a little bit of effort to, to get there. I want to bring up again, the, the, speaking of effort, the budget is still not listed on the municipal borough website. Forty colon A, I mean, sorry, forty-eight colon four dash ten requires the budget to be published on the municipal website. I brought this up and actually, back in July, the mayor said, Ms. Davis would get the budget on the website by next month.
Well, we were hoping that she would put it on the, by next month. Unfortunately, she was away on business transactions, so therefore.
Well, that was in July, Mayor.
I understand. She was away, okay? And we will work on it and that's something that we'll be putting in. But anybody who wants a proper budget, it's open to the public and they can create a copy here.
But New Jersey law, and we have a solicitor here, I'd love for his opinion on whether or not.
Jeff, I run the meeting. You're dressed with my, me, and I will try to answer you the best way I can. We're not going to go on a debate issue here. I told you plenty of time. You want to sit down, you want to discuss matter, you want to come down and sit down. Not use this audience as your pony show, okay? So let's please move on.
I'm sorry, it's not a pony show. It's, it's public conversation discourse. But can I ask, will you commit to having the budget on the website in the next two weeks?
I can't tell you to be committed because I have to sit down with the IT person from the web service, okay? I will do the best that I can. How's that?
Okay, I mean, things like Mr. Truicki mentioned earlier about fire prevention issues, those are the kind of things that, and bringing back to what council president early said about things to energize the community. Community doesn't know about it. Nobody people will know what Mr. Truicki mentioned, the people here and the people who watch the video.
It's in the newsletter. If you don't get your newsletter, I don't know why, but.
I did not get a newsletter.
Well, they're going out. They went out, they started going out today and they'll go out tomorrow. So they didn't make, they're round to yours, to your place.
It would be really helpful if things got on the website, which is what it's.
It goes on the flyer and also we do post stuff on the bulletin board if it posts up there.
Okay, I'll look for that. The, last month, we talked about the demolition of the house on Chestnut. And I had raised last month that the process does not meet the New Jersey procurement laws. And I did follow up with DCA because if you were a certified purchasing agent, it would have complied, but you're, you're not because I, I call about it.
I'm not, listen.
No, no, I'm just, it's, it's an official designation.
Go ahead.
And, and, and so that was not a knock. That's just, it's a very specific designation that, that, that the borough doesn't have. So, so the procurement laws needed to be followed. They weren't. Three bids were supposedly gone, gone out for, one, which was the one that was awarded. There was another one to a group, because I, I Oprah'd this. I wanted to see what the bids were. Apparently, there was some correspondent with somebody, Easy Hall, isn't even a demolition company, don't, does not even have demolition insurance. And then there was another company called Dangler, who, who I've used in business, and they didn't really hear anything from the borough. And, and the paperwork I had said there was four attempts to, to, to reach them. So, so I, I guess in, in, in talking to the council, I want to make sure the council's aware that, that certain laws need to be followed, certain things need to be done, and just ask you guys to, to make sure that's happening. Because I, the bid that was awarded may be a great bid. It may, it may be the best number that could have been gotten. People never know. I'm glad the house, I don't know if it's down. If it's not down, I'm glad it's going to be down. But the thing is, potentially, that costs taxpayers a lot of money because we're not following the laws that New Jersey has prescribed for doing these types of things.
Anything else on that? Anything else on that one, Jeff?
No.
Okay.
No, I said my.
You need to do your homework a little bit more, research it better than what you're doing. Number two that I'm going to say to you.
Well, I'm sorry, what, what did I say that you found was incorrect?
I'm going to tell you right now. Let me explain to you also, Jeff, that first of all, Easy Hall reached out to us. They were the one that reached out because they had reached out to the con, the owner of the property, that they were going to tear down the property, okay? What their qualification was, I can tell you. All they say that they were demolition, they can take it down. I asked them, I say, well, if they don't complete with it, can you send me a quote, okay? Number two, the other place that I contacted, I don't know who you spoke to, but I can tell you right now, I spoke to the individual four times and four times, never received an email. He even knew exactly what property I was talking about because he specifically made it clear to me by saying it's one oh-six Chestnut. I know the property. He goes, my office hasn't gotten back to you? I say, no. So therefore, for your, whoever you spoke to giving you more misinformation, we would, we would move forward with that. I'm going to also enlighten you a little bit, let our solicitor educate you a little bit. First off, I'm going to decline to give any advisory legal opinions to the public, okay? But I will tell you that we were in complete compliance with the emergency contract statute, okay?
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you.
I'm not going to.
But, but, but there's a certain procedure for it to be emergency contract and that wasn't followed either. But I agree, if it was done in the emergency contract, absolutely, it would have been a compliance.
And that's what was done. It was done. Yes, it was. We received a letter from the engineer discussing his designation of an emergency. And from the construction official, which he has every authorization to move in that direction.
I understand it was emergency, but there's still a process. Like I said, we don't need to get into the weeds, but.
You don't know, you're, you're saying it wasn't done, but it was done, okay? From our solicitor's standpoint and from the borough engineer's standpoint, it was done, okay?
I'm not sure what the borough engineer would have to do with it, but I, I will move on. We've talked numerous times about the Evergreen and Front Street intersection and requesting, I was requesting that crosswalks and a stop bar be placed there so that people driving, it would be better illuminated because people tend to go through that stop sign. In the past couple of weeks, there's probably been sixteen crosswalks painted in the town. Numerous stop bars were at least one, shouldn't say numerous, at least one stop bar painted in the town, but none at this location. And I'm just so confused. If you have somebody here painting the street for this specific use, you would not handle the intersection. That's a block from this school that we've been talking about for five months.
I'll have the council president reach out to public work and then you can more than glad to speak to the council president after the meeting, okay?
Okay, thanks for your diligence. I appreciate that. The, we also talked at least five or six months about the dangerous intersections at Parker and Woodland and Palton and Woodland. At the last meeting, you indicated that Mr. Box Office was working on an alternative plan.
Yes. Steve and I and Mark Bezar also walked over to the location because we talked about possibility making that as a one-way to win up, Parker Avenue. However, he suggested there are other alternatives to way to go. He is putting something together. He's going to present it at the November meeting to council, sit down with council, discuss the options and how we're going to go with that direction.
So, so I'm clear. Is that going to be a, a public meeting that I can also be here and ask some questions?
We're in the work session, but you can come to the meeting in the work session. You're welcome to ask questions.
Okay, I'm welcome to ask questions.
Yes.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you. The, there was a. No, thank you for asking. There's a, the resolution about the acting municipal clerk. I just want to know kind of what the, the, the council's thought process is. When the old clerk resigned in February, now I know he apparently agreed and was paid to work significantly more. I don't know how much he showed up. But why eight months later, are, is a resolution passed appointing a, a, a temporary position? Why, what's, what's, why would the, the council not go out and just hire a municipal clerk?
Because at the time, when Michael said that he was going to resign, he was asked if he could stay on. Michael decided to stay on. We didn't know if he was going to stay on for the full year or how much longer he was going to stay. When he gave us his resignation, ending of July, okay? Which he requested by the Oprah press, the CEO has paced up and you see that he was paid all the way to July. Michael then resigned. We have up to three months to fill that position, okay? Not that there's a lot of activity going on. Cheryl has done her job as the deputy clerk, okay? So not that they're saving, doing a lot, saving taxpayer money going from there. Cheryl is the acting clerk. Acting clerk can go on as far as for the two to three years, okay? So she is doing the job as the clerk, deputy clerk. So she solves this, she fills the responsibility to continue doing the job of the full-time clerk as an acting clerk.
I think Cheryl's excellent.
Thank you.
But there's a reason why municipalities have clerks.
And that's why, like I said, we always had a clerk.
Okay. The CFO, I don't know how many meetings ago it was, there was a, a, a meeting and a, I'll say, emergency resolution was passed for a CFO. And just want to know what's the game plan to hire or get a, go out to look for applicants for the CFO position? Because specifically, it was, the resolution was the person was only being appointed till the end of the year. And so we only have a couple of months between now and the end of the year.
We will go out, we will go out for opening and then go from there.
Okay, so as a timeframe, because there's not a lot of time, if you want to find quality applicants.
Listen, trust me, when we hire and look for engineers, when we're looking for a solicitor, when we're looking for a judge, when we're looking for a public defender, it's done around November. So there's time.
Okay, and what about the, the administrator position? Is the intention that who wins the election in November is going to be the full-time mayor?
That's not again, at this point here.
Why is that on your hand?
Because you're going here after the election. That's not going to, we already answered that to you. You have access all the time. You've been parking on this, the same thing. This would be sit down in November. We'll go from there, okay?
Okay, I just wanted to.
Same thing with like all these positions that are going to go up, we'll do this in November, okay?
The, to me, the administrator position is the, is the lifeblood of the municipality.
I understand. That's why I've been, I've been doing it. We've been very successful. And I've been doing it. We've been very successful and I've been, I believe, talked to a lot of people. I've done a tremendous job, so.
I don't doubt you've heard that, but back in whatever, March or April, you made a decision you weren't going to do it. Apparently, a minister would be, would be appointed. I, I just don't understand the mindset of, well, let's wait till the eleventh hour before we start a process.
Let's not wait till the eleventh hour, okay?
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mayor John Foley Jr. Address one fifty-six, Maple Ave, apartment two. That is my new address. I'm here to speak and be at for my son, seven-year-old son. October first, had a park, accident at the park, shattered his right arm. He tripped over the one and a half foot of wooden ledge that cuts across the park. The top of the, where all the marsh, the mulch is at the top. You can still see, I just went out there tonight to take pictures of it. It's, hasn't been addressed yet. My son tripped over the, the wood planks where the mulch is supposed to come all the way up to the top. He tripped over that, face planted into the ground, shattered his arm. Now, how come it hasn't been addressed? And the woman that I talked to at the park before I came to council meeting here, she almost face-planted into the ground. Once she saw me taking pictures, she come over and asked me who I was. I addressed her, I'm a mayor. As I was, I told her what happened to my son and she said, well, where were you when this happened? I said, right on top of the monkey bars.
We can get the tape.
Um, again, she wanted to ask where this happened, where I was. I told her I was on top of the monkey bars, taking pictures of the surrounding park because my iPhone was stolen and I have intentions of what I plan on doing with the park system. So I get it if I get elected. So I explained everything to her and then she told me she almost face-planted herself. So what is going to be done? This should have been roped off like taped off a week ago. It's ten days now.
So for liability purposes, I'm going to advise any councilman, mayor, not to respond to any questions.
That's fine. I have a lawyer, I have a lawyer on the case anyway.
Well, I want to say to you that I'm sorry to hear what happened to your son. And then we'll just go from what these solicitors.
Yeah, I understand.
Have you had your legal attorney reach out to you?
Well, they have, but I'm just saying, how come there's a ten days and nobody? I see many sides to this table right here.
Is this a report that was made?
What's that?
Was this reported?
You can ask the police because they came out there. So there's a, there is a report. The cops were actually there consoling my son, comforting him. Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, we'll, we'll take a look at this.
For the safety of our kids in this town.
I can say to you, we are supervised through the JIF. They sent an inspector to go out and look at our work facility. So, you know, we'll see what, what moves from there, okay?
All right.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? What's your turn, Jeff?
No.
My favorite? Thank you, everyone. Have a good one. Don't forget to come out for Halloween.